All right, for the pledge.
I pledge the.
In this way, the United States of America and in to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody. Alright, we are going to, before we begin the meeting here, we need to, we need formally administer the oath of office for three, three of the council. So we'll begin with that. Are you administering the oath?
Um, I guess I can administer your oath, but you get to administer the oath of, um, all the members.
Alright.
Evers and Howard.
Maybe Block should.
Yeah, Block is sitting right there, should be though. Perfect.
Well.
Repeat after me. I, John Hawkinson.
I, John Hawkinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of mayor.
Oh, of mayor, sorry. Of the city of Olivia.
Of the city of Olivia.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, George Evers.
I, George Evers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I should, will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the city of Olivia, uh, of, I'm sorry, of the office of city council member of the city of Olivia.
Of the office of city council member of the city of Olivia.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For Howard, ask that you raise your right hand, please.
I, Todd Howard.
I, Todd W. Howard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Faithfully, partially discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Office of city council member.
Of the city of Olivia, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
City of Olivia, to best of my ability, so.
Congratulations, welcome to the team. Alright. We'll move on here, um, with a roll call to determine the forum. Councilor Bumgarner, here. Evers, here.
Ferguson, here.
I'm here, Howard, here.
We do have a forum, um, we'll call the meeting to order here. Okay, um, now we're entering the portion of the meeting, the public forum portion. Now's the time when, uh, members of the public can address council. We asked that when you address council, that you please provide your name for the, uh, meeting record. Speaking times will be limited to three minutes. If further conversation is needed after that, we will, uh, work with staff to make sure we facilitate all those needs. Uh, so, uh, if anybody from the, uh, public is here to address council, now's your time. Not seeing any movement there, so we'll, pardon me, close the public forums portion here and, uh, move forward with the setting of the agenda, so. There's a little reminder here, we're, we're going to be setting the agenda. Uh, if anything from the consent agenda needs to be pulled out for discussion, now's the time to, uh, to bring that up. Um, so I will call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by Bumgarner to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? I'm sorry, to approve the agenda, any discussion? All in favor, I'm sorry, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Agenda's approved, as written, moving down to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes the meeting minutes from our last meeting, the approval of the 2025 annual resolution, data inventory responsible parties, uh, resolution. Uh, a resolution approving step movements for Marissa Castillo and Marcus Jakes. We have a resolution approving donations, these are the donations. We have, uh, from farm or, uh, $600 donation to the fire department. From the Jim and Mary Page estate, we have a $2,000 donation to the fire department. A $12,000 donation to the city of Olivia, uh, more or less designated for, uh, beautification projects. Just, uh, on the side wish to express a lot of gratitude to those organizations for their donations to the community. Um, we also have Resolution Six calling for a public hearing for a conditional use permit. Resolution Seven authorizing title and summary publication of ordinance 2025 dash O two. Ordinance 25 dash O two, amending the city code pertaining permitted abusance to address temporary cannabis events. I, and J is Lamarco, I, T, moving quote. We have mineral appointment confirmations, including Lisa Ryan to the park and rec board, Alicia Osis to the park and rec board, Isabel O'Neil to the park and rec board, Michelle Hanson to the EDA board, Pat Hollbeck to the EDA board, Kathy Bumgarner to the EDA board, Catalina Waltons to the planning commission. We also have December dispersments in that consent agenda. Call for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So.
Sure.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Bumgarner to approve the consent agenda, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Consent agenda carries us rim. Okay, can you move down into the business items here? We have a public hearing for the proposed ordinance, amending chapter 152 of the city code. Process for this is to, uh, recess a meeting, take some staff reports, receive public comments if there are any, and, uh, close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting, so we'll begin with staff reports.
Thank you, um, so this, um, is before you, it was discussed briefly at the last meeting. This comes at the recommendation of our planning and zoning commission, um, to update our city code, specifically regarding the B three central business district and the permitted uses involved in the central business district. This is really in our downtown area. One of the permitted use are buildings used for storage. Um, the planning and zoning, as well as this was a recommendation of our comprehensive plan, that this doesn't really fit with the vision for our downtown. We certainly encourage storage facilities in the city, we just don't necessarily want them in our downtown area where people are hopefully doing retail purchases or other services. Um, this will not prohibit any current business that have, that is being used for storage downtown. They can keep their business the same as it is. They can sell their businesses storage, it's just if that storage facility is ever changed to something else, it can't be redone as a storage unit. So this does not currently impact any current storage facilities downtown, it's for the future.
How many storage facilities do we have?
We have one official storage facility downtown, um, it's right by, it's right on Eighth Street.
International Building.
International Building, that one.
They just redo this.
Down on three.
Okay.
Um, so it's just something that, that's one of these things that as businesses open and close downtown, we want to make sure that we are supporting and with the future vision of the city, making sure that our code aligns with that.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Thank you. Well, uh, we'll reach out to the public now, uh, receiving the public comment on, on ordinance. Amending, uh, chapter 152. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Not seeing any movement on this item, so we'll, uh, close the public hearing portion of this item, and, uh, we'll move forward with ordinance 2025 dash O one, amending chapter 152 of the Olivia so, city code regarding B three business district. I'll call for a motion to approve ordinance one.
So, second.
Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by Howard to approve ordinance one, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Uh, ordinance one passes as written. Alright, moving down to discussion item C, the electric, uh, department facility. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Absolutely, Troy, do you want to come up as well? Um, so, uh, staff distributed a memo to all members of council on Thursday, kind of outlining the minimum needs of the facility. We also outlined the renting viability, the rental options, the common on options. Um, overall, the staff recommendation is to build a new facility on the land that was already discussed. Uh, but I know you all had some specific questions for Troy, you wanted to talk about the facility. So instead of regurgitating the memo, I'm gonna let you ask Troy questions and then we can jump in with any additional commentary.
How many buildings does the electrical department have right now?
Uh, right now? I'm counting Chrysler building.
Well, I'm counting that garage, you're in the Chrysler building.
We're just in one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you have another store, warm storage.
Correct, yeah, we're just in the far west bay of the.
Of Chrysler.
Chrysler building, and then we got a storage building on back.
Is there any other?
Well, the water department's in another building there.
Yeah.
Right to the east.
Okay.
Yeah. And then there's like a three sided storage shed, but it's really not, you know, closable, so.
And so sixty by eighty was the minimum size?
That's.
That's larger than the Chrysler, the section here, isn't it?
Correct, yeah. But we, so we currently have some of our equipment, what would be the storage building? And that's in there because, uh, one time we had more of the Chrysler building. And when that got shifted, we put our equipment back there and insulated it heated, so.
And that equipment has to be heated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I know that was the question that I had, was I knew there was some equipment that you had to have heated.
But it wouldn't be both strands being heated. It would be preferably the new shed being heated, we would take the heater that's currently in the old shed, we wouldn't have to buy a new heater and transfer it to the new one, so then they would have a cold storage facility and then they'd keep all their equipment that needs to be heated in the new shed to stay heated.
Yeah, there'd be no reason, no reason to heat that now, or.
It's insulated though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so I guess we're sixty by eighty, and what is the size of the section of the Chrysler building that you're in?
Oh, sixty by, sixty-two by thirty, thirty-three, I think, yeah.
And other than not having a bathroom in there, it's working?
Yeah. We got a tiny office, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I've done, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, when I think about, like, I, I, you know, last week or last meeting, like, I, I am so concerned about spending more money that, that we don't have. And I don't feel like we've properly explored renting something, because it's, and I, some of the options that were in the packet looked like it might have been good enough.
So, I mean, Troy and I have driven by all of the options. Um, the other thing to consider though is that if you're assuming, um, monthly rental price of around $4,000 for a facility to the size we would need.
Probably minimum.
Right? Probably minimum. And if you're basing this off of what we, the deal we have with the county for the police department, which is a three percent increase every single year, in fifteen years, the city has paid over $960,000 to rent a facility, when we can build a new facility for around that amount. And we're getting, we're using half of the proceed, well, the majority of the proceeds from the sale of Chrysler. And so the other part of that money is essentially a big project here for the electrical department. We're not bonding for, we're not putting in on the levy, it's, it's an electrical department project that's coming out of their pocket. That, and speaking with Jason Murray, he's already accommodated for in all of his rate increases for the electrical department throughout. So this project is solely funded by the electrical department facility.
Yeah, I would like to see the proceeds of that sale go into the reserve fund, because that's so far behind as well.
But that's why we increase the rates though, is to get that up ahead, that's why we keep increasing the rates, even though we weren't going to increase the rates, that's why we do that, to get that fund up. So, I mean, we need to protect that equipment that belongs to that department, which is funding this themselves.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is not, this is not like a surprise or anything to the council or to the PUC. This is something that has been planned for, uh, throughout probably my whole career here, and the short career that I was just a PUC member. This has always kind of been on the, on the horizon and, and a project that has been planned for up to this point.
I, I do, I know that's, it's been on there, um, so is the RO system that they may have to put in that is going to be a minimum of another million dollars, right? And I don't think we've got anything else enough in the water department to cover that. If, and that's assuming we get eighty percent from the state, which is maybe not going to happen, right? Um, we're not sure, and so I'm trying to think more holistically, like, yeah, this has been planned, but is it necessary? Right, I know you need a bathroom and can, did Pam, did you reach out to Chrysler? Are they unable to have them stay in that same, uh, garage longer?
So they had set up to a year. Yep.
A year?
A year.
Oh, yeah, well, I bet you the one year.
Yes, I want to give it. Um, when you look long term, the electric utility, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna outlive all of us, right?
Yeah.
You're always going to have electricity.
Yeah.
So to sit and focus on today, you're going to spend more money than doing the one right thing that is forever. I'm not trying, I'm not trying, it's just the way I do it is, you know, do, do you do things temporarily only to redo it down the road? Or you do it right and be done?
I'm sensitive to what you're saying, and I hope I'm not being offensive, but we it's, the, the money that we've spent hasn't hit people in the pocketbook yet, you know, for this, the city hall. And I mean, there's, there's, there's taxes that are coming that people don't know about, and this would be rolling more on top of that. So I'm getting concerned that we've gone too far with how much we're taxing, we're just always like, well, you're, you know.
So again, this isn't going on the levy though, this is coming directly on the electrical department facility. So I, I'm very sensitive to your concerns, I understand that, but it's not hitting them in that way that the city hall project is hitting on, which one of the impetuses of the city hall project, as I understand it, this predates me, was that city council didn't want to see us renting space from the county for the police department. That, that was one of the impetuses for the facility.
Renting for a number of years, you know, finally the three percent really caught up with it, and.
That's going to be the, the same thing in, in this situation.
And you're not starting at the low number that the county started with the police department, you're starting already at four thousand or more, so in, in, I, they need the housing, they have the money to pay for it, and the whole part of running a city, you're gonna have to spend money. And I know you keep saying that you don't want to spend, and you don't want to spend, and you don't want to spend, but that's how cities die, just to make that clear. That is how cities die, when we don't want to grow and we want to stop, slap, stop. We, we keep increasing the, the tax, we keep increasing the amount of the rates of electrical and sewage and everything, but for what? For what? This, we need to take care of this city, we need to take care of our departments, and we need to take care of the equipment, because none of that is cheap. I mean, it needs to be protected, and you deserve a bathroom, I'm sorry if it feels like you don't, but you really do deserve a bathroom, you deserve to be able to have an office and a bathroom, and your equipment safe, and that's what I got to say about that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, it's just, we have spent a lot of money. That's where I'm coming from.
They already have the money for this.
But it can go into the reserve funds, we don't have to raise the rates as much, and you can save people.
We just raised the rates, not.
I know, but you don't have to raise the taxes.
Then why are they looking to maybe then not self-insure, let's pay monthly insurance, correct?
Okay, let's, let's, uh, okay, so let's, let's, uh, let's just take a step back for a second. We, we can't really go forward with the assumption that renting is going to be a, a no charge situation for us either, Matt, right? Like, that money also will be coming out of something.
Yeah, the rent, I understand that. But I also, I mean, $4,000 a month is what you're thinking is the rent would be?
Is an estimate for that size of facility that we need, yeah.
The old brand building? A potential option? Like, sometimes when I was looking in there, it's like, well, there isn't enough room for a fourteen foot door. Do we need a fourteen foot door?
Yes.
Is it, is the equipment actually that tall?
Yes.
We got a truck, it's thirteen and a half.
So can we put, uh, the fourteen foot doors on the building behind the Chrysler center, the storage? You're putting the equipment in there now?
Correct, yes.
So what if you put that equipment there? And you have a smaller door for other trucks, like the two smaller trucks that are in the Chrysler bay, you know? That would mark in a place that we were vetted.
The Chrysler bay that they're in also has fourteen foot doors.
Okay, but.
So currently every facility that they're occupying does have fourteen foot doors.
So, to get rent down, can we get by with using the infrastructure that we have more wisely to take care of the tall things that have to be stored in there? Can we have, put vertical shelving in there so that we can store equipment vertically? Because I don't think we're using the vertical space very well. That's what I'm coming, I just, I'm trying to be more creative here than just like, hmm, guess we gotta build a new building.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate that, I think there's a lot of inefficiencies, uh, involved in, in piecemealing out facilities for a department as well.
Well, for, for my part, I would like to, to, um, take that money, put it back in the, in the reserve fund, make ourselves healthier there, which is where it was nicked from in the first place, right? That happened when I was on the PUC, and that was not something that was disclosed to us, just came in one day and it was gone, right? So I feel like that needs to go right back into the reserve. And I feel like we can find better economical options for storing the stuff. Um, we, I just don't think we need another sixty by eighty shed that's going to be heated and insulated and stuff. I, I want to give you what you need, but I also feel like, you know, when we did city hall, we tried to get things pared down to what we need, and I feel like, I mean, it's about over a million dollars more than what, you know, I had hoped it would be. It was supposed to be more like two and a half million, ended up being three and a half million, maybe a little more with the electrical work that was done, uh, burying and whatnot. So I'm just, I'm feeling like I have pushed this Olivia citizens too far with spending, like, I don't think they are so happy to see us spend and build. But I don't, I, I'm not convinced we have done a good enough job of finding other options that can work for less money. And let's let some things hit the tax rolls, like, if people are used to what we already spent, and then come back and revisit this later if it seems like it's the right thing to do.
And where are you getting that rent payment from? Where does that come from?
It would.
For the rest of the life of the electric department. No, because that would never have coming out of the rent budget. The rent would be paid from now until a hundred years.
Well, where, who, how are we paying for rent in the current building that rent, the Chrysler one? Are we not, we own that.
We own that though, if you want to keep it really cheap. The city owns a building that the electric department works for, that we're currently in the process of selling. But then that would be displacing a local business. So, I mean, we laid out every option on the table for you.
I still have the options, that's where I'm stuck.
I mean, but these are the options.
That, that.
It's nothing you can let go.
I don't like them, but I think that there's other ones that we can do, I mean, I, it's hard for me to sit in this seat not knowing, like, yeah, um, I don't feel like it's been demonstrated that this is a need. That's where I'm coming from, like.
They're going to be displaced in a year.
Well, right, but can we find somewhere else, like?
You're paying rent for the remainder of eternity, that the city of Olivia has a municipal electricity, right?
You're forever going to need this equipment, that's rent from now until forever, instead of just having a building,
and then you pay off and that's done. I don't understand how paying for the rest of your life.
There's mains on buildings, and it's not like it's.
It's a shed, it's not like it has three stories and water running through it, it's one bathroom.
There really wouldn't be mains.
There's one bathroom, no.
I mean, I can.
And there is no way that you can tell me that it's better to pay rent for forever for that size of the building. Once they're locked in somewhere, they can raise the rates on them. That's what happened to a lot of the businesses in Olivia. They started somewhere, and the second they got in, a few months later, the raises, their rents got raised, and they left, they couldn't afford it.
Alright, let's, uh, let's let this cook a little bit.
Rent is a policy answer.
But that unfortunately is what you're going to start doing to the citizens if you don't pump the brakes on spending, 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 spending. You gotta, it's, he's right in what he's saying as far as the other, you know, that, that city hall building came in at a lot higher than what the citizens were expecting. You want to keep spending, you know that you've got the RO system that's coming. Again, that's going to be a huge expense. You've got to put all of those on the paper and look at them all, and figure out where you're going to get the money from. Unless there's a foundation to trees or something, that I don't see where the magic money's going to keep coming from, we've got to start. You gotta.
And where are the magic buildings to house these, this equipment?
So, just, uh, we'll, uh, rewind this a little bit. So, we, we remember that, uh, that we got into this situation and we began planning for this purchase, um, that was a four years ago, six years ago? With, with our rate structure, uh, we built this purchase into the rate structure of our electrical, um, of our electrical rates for a plan, knowing that someday, uh, we were hopefully get, uh, let loose that building, um, that was procured, and, uh, find a permanent home for the electric department, so that is our rule of money treaties, I guess, that you're referring to, something that we did, have been planning for, uh, through the last, last handful of years. Um, so that's, that's that part of the question, so now, I guess what this is going to come down to is the council's going to need to determine whether we believe it's a better investment to, to rent perpetually or to, to, uh, build for a permanent situation.
Well, and I also have a little hangup where, um, you're, you're already in a much smaller shed than what you want to build, and you're telling me that sixty by eighty is the minimum, well, you're in a smaller building now, it's working, so I'm, I'm wondering why sixty by eighty is the minimum?
So they can leave all under one roof.
There's going to be two buildings.
The ones for material. One for material storage and then one for the operations.
What do you think about my idea of putting shelving in there so you can store more things inside the building with?
You still don't have a drain, you don't have water, you don't have sewer, there's none of that stuff is in the storage building.
Do you need that to store the equipment?
Oh, for equipment, yeah, I mean, go drive the car around, go park your garage.
No, I, I was talking about there's your transformers and whatnot.
By, you can put it on something, but there's, you got potential of the.
Well, that's, I'm saying shelving inside through transformers and whatnot, so use that space a little more fully. And then you can cut in floor drains, that's, it's possible to do that.
You have to take all this now. If you go pour water in there now, it goes to the walls, you can't just have a drain in the center, it's going to work.
Well, so this is where, this is where I'm saying, like, maybe we can't have all the nice things.
Sorry, I almost.
I just saying, like, at what point do you, do you say, okay, let's, let's check this here for a little bit and just wait and see if there's something better we can do, can we get by with less? Can we let the bonding that we've done hit the citizens of Olivia and the businesses? So they can get their head wrapped around that, and then, then talk about spending more?
But can you stay with the fact that they have the money for this, they're not bonding for it, they're not. But can you stay with the fact that they have the money for this? They're not bonding for it, they're not pulling it out of magic thin air?
Well, we're.
It's, the money is there. We've been planning for this. That's why we raised the rates when we did. A couple of years ago, a few years ago, to save up money to be able to do this. The money is there, the funds are there. This is not something that just.
Can I get a better talking of that?
So, uh, we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sale of the Chrysler that is being directed towards this project. And then the electrical fund reserves, you know, they budget for different project years, big project years, small project years. So this is considered a big project here.
But when we look at the budget, we're already low in the reserves. Right? With this, so, I'm just saying, that's, that's not. Uh, we could spend a little bit of that on rent. If we can find a reasonable solution.
I mean, if you want the cheapest option, don't sell the building to Chrysler, let them stay there, let's do the business. That's the. If you want the bare minimum, best idea, right? Because that's what, you're trying to look with. Well, that's the cheapest, you want the cheapest solution.
All right, all right.
That's what it is. Is don't sell the building, let them stay where they are.
Okay, we're, uh, that's, that's, uh, you know, I don't think anybody on the council is gonna. Not move forward with the.
Well, absolutely, I agree, we should sell the Chrysler, but I'm just saying. If you're looking to not spend anything. You're not spending anything that way.
Jordan, what say you?
I think, uh, as you stated earlier, this has already been a long planned project. Yes, it's unfortunate that we've had, we've had other major projects that have come up in the, in that time. Um, I don't think it's the fault of the electrical department that that happened, no, I don't think we should be punished for it. Um, it's an unfortunate thing that happens when you run a city. Um, I think it would be very unwise to not invest money into our enterprise fund. Um, if you're not getting them what they need. This is not a huge ask. Unfortunately, building costs are sky-high, there's nothing we can do about that. But this is, they, they've been in a subpar. Facility for the last how many years? Um, have made many concessions, are working in. Honestly, I'm, I'm surprised that we haven't got a call from the Department of Labor, making, forcing them to work at somewhere that's not even a rest. That's, to me, I, that's uncalled for. Um. Renting, to me, is not an option. We're, we're getting out of renting in the police department. Because it's, it doesn't make sense. You're just wasting, you're throwing away money. We have no, we have no say in what the owner wants to do with the place. What happens if we find this perfect place, we invest twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars in making it work for us? Then the building owner decides, I'm gonna jack up your rent twenty thousand dollars because you put in this and the. Value of my building went up, so no, I gotta cover my taxes.
Well, we can handle that through contract, I mean.
It's not that simple, man. Hey, this is something like I said, this is something that's, that's been planned for a long time. This is actually cheaper than when we originally started. I remember it cause I was on the PUC board with Amber Cam with the original. Thing, it was like one point six million dollars for the building. When Dan was still here. So we're actually saving money right now somehow, I don't know how, but we are. I think it would be disrespectful to the department. It would be irresponsible to not invest these mon, this money into a enterprise fund that's gonna, like you said. It's gonna be here forever. It's not going away. This is something we need to invest money into, and it's, unfortunately. It sucks spending money, but at least this one is self-funded.
One, one other thing to consider is, uh. You know, if we don't make this decision, somebody in the next ten years is gonna have to. So we take a look at, uh, probably ten years ago when we made this decision. We, you know, we'd be paying for it, or we'd be paid for it, but, uh, you know, obviously. I think there's, there's gonna, this timeline is gonna come to an end at some point. Where the, the wise decision is going to be to move, uh, electrical department into a permanent location. And now is a perfect crossroads, I think, to execute on it.
Well, to be clear too, I don't wanna withhold things that you need, like a bathroom and whatever, right? My, my real thing is. Are we overbuilding? Can we get by with less? Can we have twelve-foot doors? Do we have ex, we haven't filled up our whole, um. Fire hall yet, right? We're, we kinda built that, so we didn't in a new truck?
We've filled it.
You filled it?
It's, yeah.
Okay. So, but that's the kind of creativity that I'm asking for. Um, similar to how you guys made a sacrifice and moved into the liquor store to save some money, help the construction go, so I mean, I know. You're. I mean, you have done some pretty cool stuff, you know, so I'm not trying to be critical, but I am just tired of spending. I, I just, and I want to say. Nope, let's do something a little less, let the taxes that are coming hit, because. You know, I'm hearing about it. So, that's.
If else, there's no frills in the building, there's not any extra building. What, what it is is all we need. But, and it's for, it's not just for today, and you can look at just today, what, can we fit in this little box today? And then five years from now, I'm not, and then what do we do? And I, but we're not asking for a bunch of extra building just because we want it.
I know.
That's not how I roll, that's not how I view anything, man.
And I hope I'm not coming across as like an over or something or being punitive, I'm not trying to do that. It's just, I, I, I just can't stand it anymore.
It's okay, it's conversation, yeah, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm worried about the RO, and then I'm worried about what happens next, like, we did one road in town. And there's ten million dollars, and there's like fifty more roads. We got roads we can't pay. We just spent almost a million dollars on a pool, you know? Uh, plus sixty thousand a year and up here. Top of that, no, we have to pay.
Which was something that people of Olivia want.
Yeah, some, some did, they did.
The majority of them didn't.
Yeah, I would have rather trimmed that even more gin space.
We've already discussed enough, no, nothing.
Let's, yeah, let's focus on the, uh, the.
I think your biggest hurdle is the time. I mean, a lot of things are happening, but like you said, the all brother, that's been talked about for decades. That, that has an endeavor that's been talked about for thirty years. Um, and nothing ever happened, nothing's, you know, that's the sad part about when things aren't tackled in a timely. Then sometimes they do all hit it, but it feels like a bad time.
Is it possible to utilize the fourteen-foot tall doors that we have on the building that we have and then get? Something much smaller for, cause you have two pickups in the Chrysler garage right now?
Uh, and small white truck and a pickup.
Yeah, so twelve-foot doors would be okay for those two vehicles?
Correct.
So can we find a garage that has a bathroom in it that has heat? And a floor drain somewhere else that is gonna work, but. I don't, I don't wanna have this fourteen-foot doors be the reason we have to build. And as opposed to renting, you know?
We do have the options in front of us, Matt, I mean. Um, n- not just the fourteen-foot door, but there are other limitations to these opportunities here to, to accommodate the electrical department as well.
Part of it's having everything once bought. You put your part of your stuff here and part of your stuff a few miles away.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're gonna go get your stuff and you're like, oh, we gotta go out there and go get that piece, it's, it's inconvenient, it's all we have. So it only makes sense that it's in the, in the same spot, you know, it's part of the deal.
It makes your department run more efficiently.
Correct, yeah.
So what else are we getting the council that? We've identified twenty thirty-three as an especially problematic year for fire department equipment needs. So, pushing pause on this and setting the ten-year timer. Does the next generation no good?
And you mentioned, so the center floor drain is not just for the trucks that are, that would be accommodated by the twelve-foot doors. Why we wanna set our floor drain is of course, driving around in the winter, there's salt that melts in a garage without a floor drain. And all of your equipment, which is metal, starts to corrode. And that's a huge loss in investment. So what they're currently doing. For now, is because the Chrysler garage does have fourteen-foot dro, doors. They have to shift their equipment in there to get it melted, to get it cleaned off before it can then go into the back storage shed. So even if we are looking for a solution, which is one. A garage space with twelve-foot doors to accommodate the smaller trucks. That doesn't allow us then to wash off the taller vehicles of salt, so it doesn't corrode our materials. So that's another reason why the, the facility needs to be able to accommodate a center floor drain for all vehicle heights.
I want, I just wanna tell you that I appreciate your department, and I know that you guys never asked for more than you need, and that is also appreciated.
That's not how I view this, I don't.
I know, I know.
I don't care for frills or anything.
No, I know.
Yeah, definitely appreciate you, okay, so, nothing about what I'm saying.
It's a time you think, I get it, I get it. I just hate to see you throw fifty thousand a year out the window to revisit it and have the building cost three times as much down growth. You don't, you don't.
Yeah, it's a fair point.
Yeah.
Um, but that's where I'm still just not convinced we can't find something that's smaller, more right-sized that will work.
Right.
And be cheaper. That's.
You're still saying rent?
Or, or, or buy something that exists already. I mean, typically it's a lot cheaper to buy a building that's existing in Olivia than to build new.
So, in, in the list of rental properties, I also had EA look at what was for sale. There are no buildings for sale. Um, that are in the districts that they need to be in, that fit our building needs. Troy and I have driven this entire city. Well, authorly driving behind people's buildings to take a look at doors, so. We, we have been looking throughout the city for options.
You're just looking at the looks, right?
You're like, great, this trial, the closer see for the.
Yeah, yeah.
And we appreciate this church that you've been doing to accommodate all the questions.
And, uh, you know, just. So the council understands that this isn't any kind of. Malfeasance or anything on the staff side of things, is, is, this is, this is kind of the, this is a. This is a situation that we've been planning for, for many years, so. Um, asking the staff to somehow keep an inventory of potential building sales. To accommodate this kind of situation, that, that's never really been in the conversation. Um. So. Uh, we can, you know, that, that shouldn't have been the expectation going into this conversation. We had, and developed a plan to, to save money via electrical rates to execute on this project when. When the Chrysler building said almost to be getting, getting care of them. And, uh, this is kind of the, the decision point, I guess, at the end of that plan. What's the next step?
The next step would be, if we're comfortable moving forward, I've given three different architecture firms. And their professional fees associated with this project. Um, I would like council's direction, um, on which one to move forward with. So, uh, the idea would be to work with one of these firms. If the plan's locked down, we would like to go out for bids in late February as people are setting their construction schedules. Um, so that we can have a facility to move into by the end of this year.
Well, I think first we need to figure out what's the consensus of. Do we want to go ahead and vote or something like that?
All right. We call for a motion to move forward with professional services. On. The building of the electric department facility. Uh, at the location. That has been predetermined.
Now make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Evers to move forward with identifying. Services. For the building of the electrical department at the predetermined location. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
All right, nice.
All right, we have a divided council, so we'll do a, a roll call vote. All right, Councillor Howard.
Name.
Councillor Evers.
Hi.
Councillor Ferguson.
Hi.
Councillor Bumgarner.
Name.
I am an aye, um, to move forward now with the, uh, selection of a engineering firm.
Architecture firm.
Architecture firm. So we have three proposals ahead of us, uh.
Yes, you have three proposals, um, I put up on a screen, kind of a cheat sheet, um, comparing the three different proposals. Um, you'll notice one is significantly cheaper than the others, as was discussed in the December meeting. This is because, um, Engen Associates has already worked on a plan. I'd mentioned that we would like to make some updates to the plan, we don't wanna just move forward with the plan. Um, it has five drawers, we only need four. Um, they have located restroom facilities on the south side. Of the shed, when the utilities are actually on the north side, so there are things like that, but they have the existing drawings of the grading plan. Which is why they have come in so much lower than the other two. Um, it's entirely up to the council to move forward on whichever firm we'd like to select, but I wanted to. Give that little asterisk on one, on why one is just so much cheaper than the others, less expensive.
And we wanna make a motion on, on the architecture firm.
Make a motion that we move forward with Engen Associates.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Ever, seconded by Ferguson to move forward with the. Professional services plan set forth by Engen Associates on this electrical department building. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
I'll do a quick roll call vote, leave it on the record, Councillor Howard.
Aye.
Councillor Evers.
Aye.
Councillor Bumgarner. Councillor Ferguson.
Aye.
All right, you guys have it, uh, with Engen Associates' professional services.
Thank you, thank you, Troy.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Speaking of Chrysler Center.
Pam is next on the agenda.
Um, so, we have been having a few, um. Interesting things happening, coming up unexpectedly. Uh, so, with respect to the, the public hearing that was set up to me, that's continued, uh, the. The, um, area where the place of building that actually was renting is not zoned for. Um, mortgages, and so that is why there's an application for a conditional use permit to allow that. Um, obviously, we've been there for a long time, it's not an issue, but there's just some known protection that needs to happen for that. CUP in the hearing, that, so that's why it got pushed out, so that's one thing. Um, there was, as I updated the council before, there's a billboard that's on that property, and there's a billboard leased between the cities. And, um, the bill, the, the entity that's leasing that billboard. So, we have given notice to, um, them that there is going to be a, a potential sale of this, uh, property. And have also made Chrysler aware of that, who the, the C is, and so we've. Followed those notice provisions under that agreement, um, to terminate that, that they can, they can negotiate between each other. Or assign, you can assign that to them. Um, that would also, that would be rolled into the purchase agreement. Um, so, there, um, those are two little hiccups that are easily, easily addressed just a little bit more time. So, we have gotten a draft purchase agreement, um, from the, the Chrysler. Um, the attorney for the Chrysler, um, company. And they had made a couple requests in there that, um, we as a staff just like. You know, cannot agree to or, or give them, uh. Affirmation that that can happen, because there are things that need to come before council. And in fact, one of them's, um, needs to have a public hearing. So, there is a desire that that road that is, uh, traverses.
Bayland Street.
What's it called?
Bayland Street.
Bayland Street, um, being vacated. That's something that vacation process, uh, has to go, um, has to be noticed and go through a public hearing. Before the council can decide to vacate that road. There are residential prop, there's access to the shed, but there's also residential properties. Who also use that road to access, uh, two twelve. So, we have, um, are they front teeth or up to two twelve?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, so, I let, uh, Allison, who is their attorney, know that. And she's going back to them and they're having a discussion about it. Uh, it is possible for us as a council to hold the hearing and make the vacation contingent on the purchase. Agreement and, um, them, them giving a, a easement or dedicating public right of way. For use, um, of the public on a new road, ready for. For use of of the public on a new road, ready for a new location, we have not heard back from them yet on that. Um, so staff, we have let them know that staff's recommendation, council would be that unless there is some kind of access. That's created, that we would be recommending to council that if a vacation doesn't happen, um, so that is something that needs to get worked out. And like I said, we're waiting to hear from them, I touched base with her last week, end of week, and she had said it, um. Within a year, they had closings, they they um got delayed, so she's gonna get back to us this week.
One question about this vacation uh conversation, so. Just hypothetically. Um, if if it works out in in favor of of the scenario that you proposed, that we do vacate, yet. Uh, there's still uh permitted use of of the, you know, the residents and the the electric department to use that road?
It would be another location, they want, they wanna get rid of that, they wanna vacate.
Yeah.
They wanna get rid of this.
Oh, they wanna science.
So then, it we would have to have some kind of agreement with them, they would have to propose a new location for of. For in a, a road easement.
A road.
So they just don't want the road going through the middle of the dealership anymore, is really what it's.
Yeah.
And Pam and I have discussed, the city would be unadable if they built us a new road, you know, going over here, or if they buy that property going here.
Right.
That would be, we'd be willing to entertain that option, but without them building a new road, staff, staff's recommendation to council.
Yeah.
Of course, council can act however you'd like, but staff recommendation would be, you do not vacate that road.
Yeah, yeah, unless there's a great alternative road, I don't see an alternative.
No.
It has.
No.
It is, unless you uh take out the Olivia Tires. Yeah, working on, which was never gonna happen.
Well, the, you, there's nothing to the east that you could come around.
Not that I can think of. That's somebody around there with that ditch, there's a, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a song.
Oh, I was sharing my Mac, sorry.
Yeah, I was.
It's on my screen, man, I just, I was sharing the PDF.
It was, it was sounding good.
It was sounding good.
No, I already saw my Mac right there, Elizabeth.
There we go, I was sharing on my screen, I just realized you only could see the PDF, not the whole screen.
Yeah.
Right.
But, yes, so this is what we're looking at here.
That's the only other thing we can do, just to the east side of there.
So yeah, east side here.
Right, that's.
Something about the only feasible.
Or obviously, if they wanna buy and whatever over here.
So on that east side, then they would just be going, they would have to make a turn to get to the cutoff, because that is not our, you know, that's that's state that way, right?
Correct, yeah.
Take that through longer into twelve.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, a new access, yeah, yeah, a new access.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, well, sorry, you tampered up.
Well, the front end road is still there, so that's.
The front end road is still there, so you would just have an extra turn into two twelve.
And you'd assume that they'd be doing a parking lot or something there anyway, and fixing that up.
So, um, that was, I um had let um attorney Plunkett know that, and she's. Um, was not familiar with the vacation process, so I sent her that information insertion there, I'm just relating that. Apparently, um, Elizabeth had learned in previous conversations the city had had uh with um the Chrysler company that. That they had made this request before, and was told that it was not um a possibility, so this shouldn't be new.
I think they were rented every time they asked for that too.
They, yeah, they shouldn't be, yeah, it shouldn't be new information.
No.
Uh, however, it was written into the draft purchase agreement, and so I did point out that that was not gonna be that, we could.
Never, new conversation, might as well try and throw something in, right?
Yeah.
Right, so. So.
And they can just choose to not wanna vacate it and move forward too.
Of course.
They could, but I wanted to make you aware that that was um something that they asked for, that uh, first of all, we can't agree to. Until there's a public hearing and a decision by council, that that it would be a recommendation to not vacate that, because it would really impact access for residents. In addition to our utility.
This is, this is also where, just FYI, this area is also being discussed by the county for a potential new public works. Facility, so they would also be relying on this road if they move forward with this location, they have a couple locations in the mix, but this is a potential location. So, certainly don't wanna cut off access to two twelve.
So, um, so that's the update, I don't know if that impacts your timing uh with respect to the other matter that you've decided this evening. I do, would have to say that if something happens and our utility department stays in line, we're gonna say. Up to a year, uh, they were open to talking about month to month after that timeframe, until, so, um. So we were able to move out of there, but that was not something that was really hammered out, but they did say that at least um up to twelve, or to twelve months, so up to a year. I have real concerns, as um Elizabeth knows, about the restroom facilities. That are available to our employees, and um, so I'll just leave it at that.
Noted.
So which, you know, even for the next year, it. We might have to have a discussion about some additional alternatives, if we don't get any in that building for the next two.
Uh, would it be the consensus of the council to direct staff to not entertain a lot of communication about vacating that road?
Absolutely.
That's on.
Yeah.
Are you interested if they offer a different road alternative, if they say we're.
Yeah, if they're willing to pay for it, sure.
Thank you for them, yeah.
Yeah, otherwise, I wouldn't really keep that conversation going at all.
And it has to be done to our standards, you know, maybe this stuff, you can't put it in the slab of.
Yeah.
So, you're talking, you know, even if they walk them?
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't take the access away from the people that live over there and the electrical department, that's it.
Right.
If they don't wanna do the deal, then.
Then they were, they're waiting.
No, you can't.
They can't, then they they might walk away from buying the Chrysler.
I'm not saying that at all, I'm I'm saying that that of course is a possibility, but I mean, that was, that was their, one of their asks.
Okay. Okay.
So I can't negotiate terms that the council makes this thing on, and so I just wanna counsel, I wanna know from council.
Right.
Where you're at as far as when I am talking to them, that's a deal breaker, if that's a deal breaker, they need to know that, and we need to be able to have that information.
Well, I would also like to say that we should not have voted then on moving forward with the electrical thing, if all of a sudden, they might walk away from this if we have a deal breaker. Like, why don't we just spend eleven grand?
We didn't say it was a deal breaker for them, we just said it's one of the terms in the contract. We need to know what the council feeling is on how hard to push the term.
And I believe your motion was just to um.
Proceed with professional fees, we're not proceeding with any type of bids or approving the project, until hopefully the sale closes by the end of the week.
Car and horse thing there.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
We're trying to put all the timing together, cause it's a very short timeline.
I think you, you just want the answer now to be able to move forward without having to wait for another council meeting, correct?
We need to get direction so that we're not coming back, if if your answer is you won't even entertain a vacation of that. Um, that would.
Oh, absolutely, if they're willing to build a new road.
Okay, and so I said that.
But to just vacate it and nothing comes of it, and we have to pay for a new road, to be be put in around their property, no.
I guess the communication, you know, in in a purchase agreement, is there needs to be a road in that area for the electric department, for the residents living in that area.
At at their cost.
Yeah. Or at no cost.
That's the information.
Is the only option, they're locked there, right? Their car lot, that's the only place a road could go, is through their car lot.
So, do you mean like a future road?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, obviously, you have a road here, it could be through one of these other parcels. They didn't want it separating the office service center from a direct sales lot, it could be through a different parcel. They could talk to Olivia Tire, uh, and see what type of interest is here. Um, that would require them to expend more money, I'm sure, to purchase. Um, but those are the options that are available to maintain access to the front road.
And it could be, they could just be like, well, we're we're just gonna ask anyway to see what they're saying, maybe they say.
Right.
And then maybe they, we come back and say, sorry, yeah, fine, if you build a new road, or they could be like, all right, that's fine, whatever, we just thought we'd ask. See, none of that, we have a, we have a, you know, a very large, important interest in keeping a road in that area.
Yes.
So yeah, I'd say, yes, we need a road, no, we're not gonna just vacate for nothing.
Well, I mean, I mean, we couldn't make that decision tonight anyway, because there needs to be notice in a public hearing, then a decision after that, so.
But it's just not even entertaining that as part of the negotiation. To just vacate altogether, that's not, I don't think that's an option for any of us.
No.
John?
No, I don't think, that's not what I'm hearing, no.
So that's the information I needed, because that saves them from coming off. We have more direction that there would not be, the council would not, on its own initiative, be putting. A vacation petition forward and giving notice and holding a public hearing, unless part of the purchase agreement was that there was. An agreement to a new right of way for um access. And so that enables me to be able to say that to them, um, if that's the direction the council's given tonight, so that we don't have to wait another meeting. To ask that very question.
Yeah, I think we're clear on that one.
Okay.
Anything else regarding the uh Chrysler Center? Any reports from staff?
Um, new year, uh, we are making lead Marcus construction and our USDA rep tomorrow to go through the building. Um, so as you've probably driven around, um, you can see the additions are up on both the east and the south side, they're getting wrapped as well. Um, we hope to have gas connected in the near future, um, the electrical transformer is in. Um, they started installing for the interior city hall portion, uh, more of the ceiling tile, as well as the door fobs and things like that for security access, so. Things are moving and improving at that location, so. I think everybody at the liquor store is gonna be really excited, and finally have walls again, be really excited, yeah.
Okay. Any other reporting staff? Any reports from council? Okay, the December pool report is.
I thought it was in the packet, um, I apologize for that oversight, so again, they closed on December fifteenth for construction, they drained the pool. Um, the fifth and sixth graders who started their lessons in November, they did two weeks in December. Um, the orcas swam up until the pool closed, and they hope to reopen in the spring.
Thank you. Uh, notices and communications, the uh, the chamber, in partnership with uh, with the liquor store. Are having the annual winter warmup, um, January thirty first. Um, I believe it starts at six, or six thirty?
Six o'clock.
Something in there, okay? Uh, at Max's, so if anybody is familiar with that, it's always a fun event, invite anybody from the. Public over twenty-one to to attend, tickets are available at the liquor store and at. The chamber, uh, there's also a Q R code floating around out there, I think it's on the liquor store website, you can purchase your tickets. So go check it out, without any other business on the jet, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Howard to adjourn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Right, you're making, you're making several longer.
Thank you.
You agree, right?
Yes. Uh, yeah.